All right.
Church on Sunday.
March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, six P.M. We do have a quorum. Everybody get to stand, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, one and just as one.
Honor, Texas flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Councilman Wallace, would you please lead us?
Yes, bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and all the blessings you give us. I just ask that you watch over us tonight as we make decisions for this wonderful community. And I ask that you be with each and every one of those that are with us tonight and help them, help everyone to, for you to work through them, Lord, in this name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, we're gonna move into introductions, recognitions, and proclamations. At this time, proclaiming April twenty-twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I believe we have some folks in. I will walk into the podium and read this.
Cityville, Campbell proclamation, declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the Cityville, Campbell. The month of April signifies our commitment to supporting survivors of sexual assault and child abuse while encouraging strong criminal justice and civil system responses to end the epidemic of violence and abuse in our communities, whereas violence and abuse remain a significant public health issue, but communities may thrive by establishing partners, partnerships between survivors, social service organizations, law enforcement, government, and civic agencies, and become advocates. And whereas one in three women and one in six men will experience unwanted sexual experiences in their lifetime, and I and one in six boys and one in four girls will experience child abuse before the age of eighteen. Whereas abuse can have long-term damaging effects on the survivor that leave a mark on family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas each year, the month of April is dedicated to recognizing survivors of sexual assault and child abuse while also providing prevention, awareness, and education and assessable resources. And whereas we dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our community and encourage all citizens to learn more about the ongoing efforts in prevention and awareness the Crisis Center and Department of Family and Protective Services as the community to join in promoting public awareness and prevention throughout the month of April, including Start By Believing Day, April the second, to support those who have been the victims of sexual violence. Go Blue Day, April the fourth, wear blue to support awareness of child blues, of child abuse. Light up the square in El Campo, April the eighth, to recognize survivors in our own communities. Denim Day, April the twenty-third, wear denim in support of survivors of sexual violence. Now, therefore, I, Eugene Bustamante, Mayor of El Campo, of the City Council of, City of El Campo, do proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-five as Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the Cityville, Campbell, Texas, in official recognition whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the Cityville, Campbell, to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of March twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for all the talk, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, I know we have something coming in a moment as well, but thank you all so much for continuing to support us. If you're not aware, we do have an office that just opened here in El Campo, right down the street. There is a resale shop attached to it as well, and we're so glad that you guys have welcomed us into the community and all of the support. And we're here for survivors if they ever need anything, right down the road, so thank y'all again.
All right, moving on to item number five, a public hearing, S U P twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two, an application by Adrian Ramaz Mata Rodriguez, tenant for a special use permit to operate a tire and mechanic shop in a structure located at approximately zero point three eight nine three acres of Hardee Block seven, lot four, five, and six, general location, eleven oh two West Jackson, El Campo, Texas, seven seven four three seven. So, that was the public hearing, the opening of the public hearing, now we'll be closing. No one was here to speak on behalf of that, so at this time we will close that. And we will move on to item number six, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. City council is limited to making a statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry or reciting an existing policy, but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. And at this time, we have no public comments. So, we're gonna move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. Item number one, approval of city council, regular meeting, March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna approve the consent agenda.
There's the two other items of consent?
There's two other, we just need to reflect either.
We can, we can approve the whole consent agenda as presented there.
Is that your motion?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and second, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number eight, items for individual consideration.
You want her to go ahead and get started, Mayor?
Yes, yes, okay.
This is ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh five, authorizing the S U P which you just called, held the public hearing for. I believe Crystal Hasselmeier, Planning Director, has a brief presentation on this.
Good evening. This presentation is based on the staff report that's in your council packet, S U P twenty-twenty-five oh-two. This is the mechanic shop that's located at eleven oh two West Jackson, currently vacant. This is the map location for it, where you can see it on our Jackson Street corridor. This is the location that Midnight Tenters came from, and so this is the new tenant that's proposing to go into this location. And so it is an existing shop already. It's surrounded by residential and commercial, residential on the backside and commercial along the corridor that it sits. There are more pictures that are in your packet, but these are just the pictures we put in there. The site details, the business name would be Jackson Street Tire Mechanic Shop. A lease has not been executed yet, but it is in discussion pending the outcome of the S U P. The hours of operation are gonna be Monday through Saturday from eight to five. Storage of tires and tools would be inside the shop, work to be conducted inside the shop as well. As for signage, they're gonna use the existing post that's next to the building and not making any additional improvements. And they are proposing to do tire repairs, car suspension work, transmission work, engines, and repairs to windshields and tending. Okay, this request is eligible for approval, and it was approved with conditions by your planning and zoning commission. The conditions here presented do reflect some of the things that we've been adding in our council meetings, and so I wanted to make sure that the planning and zoning is aware of some of these things that we're putting in. And so we are proposing conditions that include no storage of tires, parts, or tools left outside of the building after hours or overnight or visible from the street. No additional auto-related services performed onsite without first seeking an amendment to this approved S U P. All work must be performed inside the building. My commission asked me to clarify that they did not recommend saying with the door closed because they feel like it's a health and safety hazard in the summer with regards to noxious fumes and no A.C. inside this building. But they, they do recommend working inside the building. It does have two bays for it, you'll see in your pictures. Additionally, displays, this is something we added after discussing with the P and Z. We've noticed that when we allow tires and feather flags that it gets a little bit liberal in, in the amount. And so we're trying to reduce that by limiting it, in this case, to one stack of five tires, no more, and two feather flags, all of which have to be removed and put inside when this is not in business, or when it's not open. And then additionally, no parking or storing of vehicles for a period of more than forty-eight business hours. Any questions on this S U P?
Appreciate you thoroughly, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it considered underneath the awning, is that considered in the building where they can do work?
No, not necessarily. We would, we would consider that outside the building, but there may be cases where someone pulls up and needs a quick fix, and if you guys wanted to consider that as part of in the building, then we, we could allow that through the code of enforcement.
I just don't see how a tire shop and a mechanic shop can operate in two doors.
There's additional doors on the back, I don't, are you able to pull up the staff report pictures? Okay, so almost there. Yeah, so they have the two bays here, and then I don't think there's a picture of the back of the building, but there's three bay doors on the back, so we believe that there's more, more room. But essentially, they, the applicant understands that it would have to be inside if it's approved, that that's typically what we've been doing with everyone. This might be where the other bay doors come in, maybe into the interior section of the office. It's not totally clear where the back doors enter.
Crystal, if the, if the, if the, if we're wanting the awning, if we wanna limit the work under the awning, do we need to make modifications to this?
Yes, so if you approved it with the conditions presented and then edit whichever one you wanted?
I mean, it says inside the building, I don't know how you can mistake that under the awning is considered to be inside.
Or we could say inside the building or under the awning?
We don't want any work done under.
You don't want it?
No.
Oh, well, we wouldn't consider that inside the building unless you guys specifically considered it that way. For us, inside the building is in the building. I'm sorry, I thought you guys were wanting to allow that.
I mean, I agree with Councilman Hyde, I think that's gonna be a touch bit, but that's their business.
Did the P and Z consider a limit of the number of cars to be stored? I mean, I saw the limitation of no more than forty-eight hours, but what about the total number of vehicles stored?
We haven't discussed that, it hasn't come up as an issue with any of the previous ones. So, it's not that it wouldn't be, but we just haven't talked about that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna approve, we approve this resolution. Twenty-twenty-five dash what?
Twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five.
It's ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-five.
It's actually an ordinance.
Ordinance, yes, excuse me.
Second.
We got a motion and second. All in.
So, we, as we go on with this, we're actually developing more stringent on, on new applicants. This, this can't retro back to someone who already has, am I correct?
That's correct.
So, the thought here is that eventually, this will be for all new businesses, and if old ones go, it's not grandfathered.
So, they're perpetual, they can't, they're, you can't review them at all?
They, they can come back and reapply for an amendment, and then we could just add that in there if they decided to do something else.
Well, somebody's competitors don't have the same.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is, which is.
It's a challenge for us.
And that was the reason for my question, exactly.
We are utilizing, to your point, we are trying to standardize some of these things. I don't know if you noticed, but for any of the auto-related stuff, I've been asking the same set of questions because that's what comes up when we talk about this. And we're trying to standardize some of the conditions based on the things that we're looking at because we know in most cases, we would want them to work inside, we would want nothing left outside. You know, and again, with the signs, you know, we, we feel like if we say it's okay to have this sign, you know, but if we don't put a number on it, then they can argue that we didn't put a number on it, so they can put as many as they want out there. So, we are trying to standardize it, but it is a learning curve for us because we just never know what to anticipate.
My concern is I see what happens to the other shops, and it's not very tightly. And that's, that corridor, that place right there, people travel that to go to football games, they travel that to go to school, and I just, I want it clean. I don't want, I don't want any exceptions, I want you to stay on them.
I agree with that.
I, I just have one question, and then we can talk about this after the meeting. If we, is it, is it possible to put limits on how long these, these S U Ps need to be renewed every so often? Because perhaps what we think to be okay today may not be okay four years from now. I don't know if there, if there, if that's a legal thing to do, I don't know if there's a, something that, you know, but if, if going forward, we can consider some limitations?
Sunset provision?
We can.
I think, yeah, we would just add it as a construction, I'm sorry, my.
Yeah, we can, we'll need to amend the existing ordinance on the S U Ps, but that can be done.
You're doing a zoning overhaul anyways.
We can change our mind.
Well, it'd be for future business, so we just put it on another agenda.
Well, you know, the thing is, is things change all the time. You know, what, what we think is, is normal now in ten years may not be normal.
Great.
And, and I don't know what that, what that is and how that looks, but it's something to consider.
Sure, I'd be happy to do it with you.
Well, it used to be everybody worked on tires and cars and stuff like that inside a building. Now we've got them working, doing this work out on the side of our main drags right on the edge of the street. Engines and transmissions laying out there for months.
Now, that was gonna be three within a quarter of a mile.
Get that.
Yeah.
They're so close, I gotta look at all of them.
Between that, the subways, and loan shops.
Yep. We got a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? I abstain, I, I cannot vote on this one, so we've got motion passes, six to. No, I abstain.
So, you need to know why.
Yeah, we can fill out.
Yeah, he'll fill out the conflict of interest questionnaire.
All right, moving on to ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash zero-six.
I'm sorry, go ahead, you didn't read the last one, so I thought you were gonna stop.
Okay, no, go ahead, you, you got the floor.
Okay, so this next one is something we're presenting to you guys for consideration. We have noticed that there's been a lot of cars that are just parked in lot for sale in commercial parking lots. And so we wanted to see if you guys were, you know, felt the same way about this, if you wanted to address it. And if you do, there's some proposed changes in here that allow us to send notice of violation to the owner of the vehicle and the property, commercial property where these vehicles are parked for sale. I did wanna add that this is just for, like, if I take my car, I park it in the parking lot, and I lock it, and I walk away from it, and I leave it there until someone buys it. This does not apply to, like, if I work for a business that I'm shopping at, or eating at, or working at. If my personal vehicle has a for-sale sign, that does not count. It does allow you to sell a vehicle at your house if you have one, you know, at your house with the for-sale sign in it. And it really just kinda helps us to get some of these non-car sales places kinda cleaned up. And we do this because you've all decided you wanted your auto-related stuff to be by S U P, and that includes your auto sales. And so if that business wanted to sell cars, they could come and apply to you guys for an S U P to see if they could get approved for that, but in the meantime, it would keep the cars from being stacked up at McDonald's, or across the street, or anywhere in any of our commercial or private or public parking places that just leave it there for sale.
I was a little bit confused when I was reading this about parked on the city right-of-way. Could you help me understand that a little bit? We're not, are we just talking about parked on the city right-of-way, or are we talking about anybody's, anywhere on somebody's parking lot?
So, this, it does include not being able to leave stuff on the right-of-way, but this section is specifically related to parking it for sale and leaving it. So, parking.
Anywhere on the premises out in front or whatever.
Right, so if I parked it out, outside of Jackson Street Coffee and Tuco Plumbing over there, that's a public right-of-way, I can't do that. But if I'm parking there because I'm going into the business, that's different. So, this only affects just parking something to put it up for sale.
So, there's a, a realistic scenario is, I would say that, and I don't know this to be true, but I think it's true, that the people that park their cars for sale in that McDonald's area have not received permission from that landowner. I would say that Darryl Hoffer also generally has vehicles for sale on his and hundred percent knows who those people are. So, if, if, if we pass this the way it stands tonight, Darryl would no longer be allowed to do that unless he came here and asked for us to allow that.
Correct, yeah, so he would have to apply for an S U P for auto sales.
Okay, I'm okay with that. And then I have questions, I just want clarification, and maybe you guys read this too, but with the boats and the R.V. parking, just to confirm, you guys will allow a boat or a R.V. to be parked outside on the public right-of-way for up to twenty-four hours before it gets a violation request or notification?
Yes, that's correct. It's in a different section than the one that we're adding in here, but it does have, in section twelve point oh-three oh-oh-four, it says a period of time not to exceed five hours, but it also says not to exceed twenty-four hours. So, anywhere between five and twenty-four is how we interpret that.
My question, a lot of people come back from hunting lease with their tribal trailer or, or bike with the boat, and they wanna clean it up, so, and they don't have, they wanna clean it up over a weekend's time. I don't have a problem with that, but if they, if it's twenty-four hours, can they pull it in their driveway for an hour and pull it back out on the road?
Oh, let's see.
If they keep it in the driveway without anybody's business?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
So, it's just, it just regards, it's just with regards to them in the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
So, like, our neighbor would be in violation after twenty-four hours.
See, I don't have a problem with our neighbor doing that because he only does it when he goes fishing, and he, he don't abuse it at all.
Yeah, but you're coming about over the weekend, all he has to do is.
Right.
Put one of his own vehicles on the, on the driveway.
Right, and put his boat in the driveway.
In the driveway.
Yeah, and then took it out there the next day if he wants to run the motor again, like he always does. He runs the water hose out there and starts his motor, cleans everything out. I, I do have a problem with them leaving there and, and all the time and putting a tar pot in there, but cleaning it up, that's a different story in my opinion.
I, I initially had concerns about this infringing on private property rights, but if it allows them to come back to us for S U P to, if that's what they want with their property, and that's what is, you know, if, if we, you know, they had the opportunity to do it, I'm okay with this, and I would like to move that we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash oh-six as presented.
We got a motion, anybody like to second that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
We got a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Crystal, you got the floor again.
Yeah, all right, resolution twenty-twenty-five nineteen is authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block grant. It's an application through the Texas Department of Agriculture for a downtown revitalization fund. This is a two-step grant application, so the initial application is just to see if they'll accept us to move on to the second level. The grant amount is one million dollars, and the match for the city cost would be five percent, or fifty thousand dollars. We're looking at projects in our, specifically geared to your downtown area. Looking at this for recommendations that are going into the comprehensive plan that are starting to come together for you all. But it would include things like repairing some utility lines that are outdated. And in addition to that, we can add accessibility, there's an intersection there that doesn't have crosswalks, we don't have any ramps, so we could add some accessibility features, we can add decorative lighting or benches. There's a wide array of things that we can do in our downtown area. We do not have to commit to the funds necessarily right this second if we don't get approved for moving to the second round. And we don't have to commit until, project-wise, until we do that second round of application. So, this is just permission for us to apply for that first round and to see if we get invited to apply officially with specific projects in mind.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash nineteen.
We got a motion, anybody like to second that?
I second it.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal, nice work tonight.
Okay.
Busy lady.
Moving on to item number nine, we will be going into closed session at six twenty-four P.M. Moving on to item number nine, uh, we will be going into closed session at six twenty-four PM.
Okay, at this time, it is six thirty-eight PM, we're out of, uh, closed executive session, uh, session. Going into, uh, regular session, and, uh, we're coming in with no action, so. And at this time, meeting is adjourned.